From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no one registered for the comments from the audience, so we'll move on to four. Gifts, donations, recognition, student and staff spotlight, the Whitnall Middle School Musical, a snapshot performance. So come on in. Come on in. Will the podium be in their way? You can move it if you want to, whatever you want to do.
Okay, so this is our middle school drama club, and we've been working quite diligently on a show called Rockin' Around America for the past couple of months, and we just had our shows a few weeks ago already.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, we wanted to perform a couple songs for you guys, if that's alright. Our first one is just gonna be the opening number here, called Destination Rock and Roll. Ready? Really loud? Okay, go. Destination Rock and Roll. We built this city. We built this city on rock and roll. Destination Rock and Roll. We built this city. We built this city on rock and roll. Say you don't know me, or recognize my face. Say you don't care who goes to that kinda place. Marconi plays the mamba. Listen to the radio, don't you remember? We built this city. We built this city on rock and roll. We built this city. We built this city on rock and roll. Built this city. We built this city on rock and roll. We built, we built this city now. Built this city. We built this city. We built, we built this city now. Built this city. We built this city with rock and roll. Rock and roll! Alright, so then our next one we're doing is called Start Me Up. I have to find it, sorry. Make them up. You can start me up. You can start me up, don't ever stop. You can start me up. You can start me up, don't ever stop. I've been running hot. You got me just about to blow my top. You can start me up. You can start me up, don't ever stop, never stop, never stop, never stop. You make a grown man cry. You make a grown man cry. You make a grown man cry. Spread out the old, you got to leave. I walk around in a meat, meat machine. Start me up! Props to you guys for inventing that dance move there with the space that you have. Props to you guys. Oh, we were also going to try A-B-C.
Guys get some good exercise too, eh?
Yeah, it'll last five pounds. Go heater! Could you have a good time? A-B-C. Easy as one, two, three. Simple as always, me. A-B-C. One, two, three, baby, you and me. A-B-C. Easy as one, two, three. Simple as always, me. A-B-C. One, two, three, baby, you and me. A-B-C. Easy as one, two, three. Simple as always, me. A-B-C. One, two, three, baby, you and me. One, two, three, baby, you and me. One, two, three, baby, you and me. We had only prepared the three songs, but I didn't know if it was alright with you guys, they were kind of really wanting to do Bohemian Rhapsody real quick. Would that be a problem? Um, this one would also require lights off. Yeah, go for it, see what happens. Thanks guys, appreciate it.
This is great, thanks for coming.
Oh, we don't want that one. Is it almost done? I see a little silhouette of a man's got a moose, got a moose, will you do the fine dongo? Look, you're looking like me, very, very frightening. He's got a tail, he's got a tail. He's got a tail, he's got a tail. I'm just a poor boy, nobody loves me. He's just a poor boy from a poor family, spare him his life from this machiacity. Easy come, easy go, will you let me go? Bismillah! Do, we're gonna let you go. Let me do. Bismillah! We're gonna let you go. Let me do. Bismillah! We're gonna let you go. Let me do. We're gonna let you go. Let me do. We're gonna let you go. No, 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 no. Mama mia, mama mia. Mama mia, let me go. Yes, above, has the devil put a sign for me? For me? For me? Yeah!
Awesome job.
Do you wanna start the story about Oregon Piper?
The story?
About Oregon Piper, so...
Which story, go ahead.
On Friday night after the show, a lot of the kids went to Oregon Piper.
Oh no!
And the last song of the night they did was Bohemian Rhapsody. And so they were, the whole dance, yeah, mosh bit singing along.
I feel bad for the couple who was dancing before us.
What's that?
I feel bad for the couple who was dancing before us.
They were trying to slow down for that song.
Thank you all, you guys did a great job, thanks for coming.
Gotta be one of the best starts at our meetings.
Absolutely.
If you don't give me wrong, consent agenda stuff is very exciting, but I don't know if it goes over there.
Yeah, that was pretty exciting. Just go outside. I'm in the middle of a meeting!
Now it's on, now it's been recorded.
Bye Roman. That's my child. Alright, so on to five consent agenda. A is approval of May vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of April 22nd and May 60,019 school board minutes. C is approval of 2019-20 cease of one contract. D is approval of 2019-20 Board of Education meeting dates. E is approval of personnel recommendations. Would anyone like to remove an item? Do you? Okay, anyone else like to remove an item? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve items A, B, C, and E. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay, D.
Yeah, so I was just looking through here and wondered, um... There was a couple of dates, I wondered if... The, on 13 April, there is no class for students. And if there was also, if we moved the board meeting to a different date, then some families could have a three-day weekend and not have to think about coming to a board meeting, whether it's board members or community participants, we don't know what might come up on that date. So people might end up with a choice, having to make between a three-day weekend with their with their family somewhere because they don't have, their son or daughter doesn't have class, versus having to, wanting to attend a board meeting if there's some issue that strikes their interest coming up that they don't want to attend.
Would they be coming back from whatever they were doing?
It's actually a four-day weekend now, so Friday too.
Oh yeah, they are, yeah. So I, that just adds more, more weight to what I'm saying, so, um, anyway, I'd like to not have it on the 13th of April because of it being a four-day weekend. That's my main issue.
Okay, any other comments?
Would you consider moving it to the 20th then, as an option? Is that the, you can have disturb?
Easter's the 12th.
I'm just gonna say, you know, so one of the concerns, if there's not at least two weeks, and again, we have to do it in summer, it's tricky. You don't get a lot of time to process between, and we literally turn around and have to, and there's stuff to do.
Yeah.
The other part is we have statutory deadlines in April that we must comply with related to non-renewal contracts, so we just have to be careful if we're gonna switch it to make sure that we're compliant because that's the month that we bring preliminary non-renewals forward, so.
My proposal is to move to the 6th, and as far as May goes, I'd like to move that one from the 11th to the 4th, so there's two weeks.
Yeah, but then the 27th and the 4th would be back to back.
But they're, but they're not, but their information shouldn't necessarily be paired, right?
I see what you're saying.
There's also one on the spring break week, are you, you have the same concerns with that one?
The 23rd of March.
23rd. Yeah, just noticed that when he was talking about the other one, I'm like...
Yes, I do. I'd rather do the 2nd and 16th of March than the 9th and the 23rd.
I guess, I wish I would've had a chance to, there, because there are some timelines with contracts and statutory, I just wanna make sure that we have enough time with some of the things that we typically do.
So is there a deadline for when this needs to be approved?
You mean for, for us? No, it's just a matter of getting out to folks in terms of that.
So, I guess I would suggest that we table it, bring it back at the next meeting after you've had a chance to look at those things, but I'd like to not have them, if we can avoid having a back-to-back, that'd be good, and then, like in December, it's back-to-back, and then if we can avoid having it on spring break or the end of the 40, Easter weekend, that'd be good.
So you're saying back-to-back in the same month?
In the same month, right, yeah, in the same month, because the information is paired, right?
So, um, is everyone else in favor of tabling it?
Yeah, I'll second a motion to table.
There is an emotion, you just... But you haven't yet, that's what I'm saying, so...
So our next, so our next action meeting is the end of June, and it's literally done, the next meeting would be, would apply into this, like our July meeting is on here, so if we're going, if we could at least have some agreement that we're okay with July dates, because our next action meeting is a board to take action on, unless we made a special meeting on June 10th, is to...
There are times where we do action items on the first meeting of the month, so...
We do, I'm just saying that we have to be aware that we're gonna have to make the next meeting on June 10th an action meeting to get this done, because I'm not comfortable waiting until June 24th to approve it, when the next meeting, I mean...
So I guess what I'm asking is that you take another look at December, um, March, April, and May. It's better that they're back-to-back with a, if they're gonna be back-to-back, it's better back-to-back with a meeting from a different month, rather than a meeting from the same one, you already explained why.
Okay, um...
I was gonna say, I gotta close with approving this now and then fixing it after the fact, just to get it out of the way, so I don't have to come back for a, just the scary thought of having to come back for the meeting just for this. I think since they're far enough dates out that we can give, we can still prove it as is and just fix it with the next, with the next meeting or whenever we need to, since we're talking about fixing those dates in the future, I know we've moved dates in the past after we've already approved the calendar, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, and this, this calendar doesn't include potential retreats or things like that.
Okay with that. I don't, fine with your comments, obviously, I just wanna get something said, I'm fine if we change it later.
Then let's just approve July, I'd rather not approve, I, I'm personally, I'm, I'm not a fan of this because of the reasons I stated, so... I would rather not approve something with the intent of changing it.
Karen, I know that you support him, any comments, Steven or...
I like it the way it is.
And, you know, I, I understand wanting to get summer out, I'd be okay with, you know, approving the beginning of the summer if we need to take another week or two to look at it.
So then would we approve the July, um, 2019 meeting dates and then table the rest of the calendar for later session?
Second.
Good. Good. So we'll take a vote on the amended version to just approve July 2019 at this point and table the rest of the months for a later meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to six action items. A is math textbook adoption, a motion to approve. So moved? Second? Any questions, discussion?
I have one question, I'm not sure if anyone can help me out with this, but I was curious about, like, I think there was something mentioned about an eight-year license? Does that sound familiar?
Lynn?
That was for you, that question?
An eight-year license for the math book adoption?
She said, I don't remember. Said she remembers some comment.
There was something about the math textbooks, I think there was something about an eight-year license?
Right.
Is it our intention that we'll use this math textbook for the full eight years?
Yeah, yeah, if it's updated enough, then it will, because it has room for updates as they go. So the eight-year license was actually a lot more economical than trying to go year to year on the one year. So this is the first year rolling, it's gonna be a three-year renewal out, and at that point we'll have, uh, a new license.
Any other questions? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on to B, Chromebook purchases for 2019-2020, take a motion to approve. So moved? Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
Have the prices seen? Yep?
Yes. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on to C, preliminary budget, motion to approve. So moved? Second? Any questions or discussion? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on to seven, reports. A is referendum construction update, Mike?
Just trying to think where we are in the process right now. We have our continued Thursday meetings with, with Dan, we've been focusing a lot upon the, on the sign, for, for the monument sign for HCE, a lot of discussion about the parameters of what's allowed out there on Janesville. We're gonna come back this week and meet with, continue to meet with them on those parameters on Thursday, but besides that, everything is going pretty smoothly. We're at a point right now where we're hoping for weather above 50 degrees at night, we need, we're at a point where we need to shut down, the boilers both at, obviously, HCE and, and the high school, where they won't, that heat won't be up and running again until the boilers are back online again at both schools, and so we need above 50-degree temps during the night to kind of be able to hold building temperatures during the day, so we kind of thought by, by May 15th, we'd be in the safe zone for that, and clearly, clearly. So we're hoping after Memorial Day weekend, that's kind of the drop date as far as when that needs to go offline, and I see 50s at night right now, so if anyone do a rain dance or a non-rain dance, or did you do a dance, whatever it is, that's kind of where we're at right now, it's on our focus.
Okay, you want to add any questions? Okay, then on to B, SWSA report.
I did not go.
I did. Um, a lot around the budget this year, or I mean, this last meeting, we're at that time, and if you saw Journal Sentinel yesterday, seems to be there is some impasse between the governor and the legislators right now, and so hopefully that does not... I, yeah, I mean, we're sort of stuck in the middle of politics right now, unfortunately. I think there, there was a lot of talk on the Blue Ribbon Commission, which was put together by Speaker of the House Voss, and it was run by Republican senators who put forward those recommendations and have sort of set those all aside right now to play politics, which is unfortunate, because we did have agreement across the board that was non-political around special education funding, some of the other pieces that clearly are not really partisan issues, and that's sort of just set aside, so we're not sure what that means in terms of that. We did get some news about two different things that were shared, some folks who've been meeting with their legislators, and a couple representatives that have spoken at a couple gatherings, and what the per pupil funding is, whether that's revenue limit or categorical aid, and I think that's really a critical piece in terms of long-term for us, you know, where that falls into play, but I don't know, they're saying late fall would be nice if the budget were done, so I don't know that we're all holding our breath right now that it's gonna be done in order for us to start a school year or the summer and all of those other critical pieces. My shared information with you, that Thursday, the Joint Finance is taking up K-12 bills, they're taking it up first, which is not typically the case, they typically take up K-12 issues later in the process, and if you saw WASB's evaluation of the 74 items, literally are pulling them all out of there, so there's two ways of approaching the budget when a governor gives the budget to legislators, they either keep them all in and then they have to have a majority to pull them out, as they want to pull them out, or to start with base, and then they have to have a majority to add them back in. Based on how the political parties are right now, they've gone back to base, and that's been about a dozen years since they've taken a governor's budget back to base and stripped it, so that's a new process that hasn't occurred, and so it's, as you know, we've been getting a lot of legislation that passes through the budget process. It was never meant to do that, we were never supposed to pass legislation through the budget process, but that's sort of how the negotiations happen in that world, so this is sort of taking out all of the legislation and building it upon, meaning you need to have a majority to put it back in, so, I don't know, it's sort of sit and wait and see and be ready to act if we think we see some, but right now, you know, the headline was at an impasse, and we'll see what moves them or causes them to move, I don't know, I don't think we have enough clout, K-12 educators, to make them move more than any other group with Medicaid or transportation does, so we'll see what, where that ends up. So we continue to keep in tune and I'll keep sharing information if we see any, I'm more curious after Thursday's meeting on K-12 education, like if there's any talk about that or if there's any movement on that, so I'll share that once the Joint Finance Committee meets on Thursday.
I did get an email from a board member in Appleton, and she had saw that I was at the Joint Finance Committee thing, and she wanted to talk, so we talked, and she just wanted to know what we are doing, what we've done, and, and I told her about SWSA, and she knew nothing of it, and she was gonna go to the website and take a look at it, and she thought that, Appleton's like the, she said, the sixth largest district in the, in the state, and within the Fox River Valley, there's 15 districts, so she thought that'd be a really good idea if they banded together to do something like what we're doing, and I said, well, I believe there's a rural association as well. Those are the two that are pretty prominent?
Yep, they carry weight with legislators and have some, yeah.
So, it was a nice conversation, and hopefully, I mean, SWSA didn't start overnight, but it'd be a good, a good thing for them to do.
Okay, on to C, School Board PTO and Reason Reports, anyone have anything to report?
I went to ours and, I was gonna, I got on the agenda to go first and then to come over here to, for the, what was here? Oh, the, um, the Smart Kids one.
National Honor Society induction?
And I got over here and it was done, done like in 15 minutes.
Induction?
Yeah.
It took a little longer.
Maybe half hour? Half hour, 45 minutes. By the time I got over here, my wife's walking out, so, well.
Band boosters, Matt, they're kind of getting their wheels under them for things for the summer, Car Wash is fundraising, we're changing the name officially to Music Boosters, we're supporting, or they are, we are, they're supporting the different groups by having concessions before all the concerts, so it's more encompassing for band, orchestra, and chorus, and then as far as band stuff goes, they're recruiting for color guard, so we can actually enter competitions for marching band in the fall, and that's about it.
Yet they have a color guard to enter?
To, yeah, to compete, you need a color guard. And eighth, seventh graders going to eighth grade next year, are able to join marching band, right, is that correct? They can do parade band, I know, I don't know about marching band. I haven't heard that discussion.
Seventh going to eighth, eighth going into ninth, can do the parade band thing.
Seventh going into eighth, yeah, I think they included, I think they were talking about bridging it out to have, at next year's eighth graders be able to march in the marching band, to try to add, to try to increase the numbers, so, yeah.
Alright, well, HCE PTO is tomorrow at 7:00, and Principal Chat is at 6:30. Also, I went on the first grade field trip to the school forest, I don't know if you saw me in the background of one Twitter picture.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, Jonathan sent, no, this is last Wednesday, but I don't think it could've been a nicer day, we really lucked out with that, but the high school students did a phenomenal job of running the program, because they do the whole thing, teachers really not doing anything other than making sure all the kids are kind of in the general area they need to be in, but it's really well done, it's the second year I've gone to it, and it's, I really like that, we have that cross-school trip that happens where the younger students can see the older students and all the different things they can look forward to coming up, so.
Alright, Whitnall Middle School, and this is their PTO meeting, but I checked in with the minutes, so they have a new president next year, Kelly Peters, so thanks to Kelly for volunteering for that, and thank you to Tocquey Anniverk, who was the president this year. Events coming up are the Whitnall Middle School run on May 31st, signups are open, they're also looking for volunteers, and that is a scholarship in the name of the Duffy family. There's also eighth grade promotion and dance coming up, who will be going to...
Um, there's also eighth grade promotion and dance coming up, which will be really great, and then, of course, huge thanks to the Woodville Middle School Drum Club for coming and doing their performance tonight of Rockin' Around America, just great participation, love to the dance moves.
One other thing, it was also at the K-five and first grade concerts for HCE.
Oh, man.
Yeah, that's right.
You're rockin' and rollin'.
Exactly, and that was, uh, it was really well, I mean, we, you saw the, say, they were the same songs, but you got to see how, you see what they progressed from, from K-five to first grade, and there is improvement, and everybody seemed to have a really good time, I didn't really see anybody crying or anything like that, everybody seemed enthusiastic, so it was good. Lots and lots of parents there.
Great. Alright, thank you. D, referendum monthly financials?
Nothing to add here, uh, except that, uh, this is probably the least amount of money you'll see spent the rest of the, of the way, so cash flow burns...
That's something to see.
Fast and furious right now, yeah.
Okay. Eight items for future consideration?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about having some bubble up on our progress on Pidnap, so we just approved some new textbooks for math, and I know there's been some concern over our district test scores, so the way they're trending, so, um, I sent an email, I hope you have a solid discussion on that, sorry.
And as I believe in responses back that we do have those scheduled, that we do them each year, so we would continue with that, but, um, okay.
Yeah, I would say that probably August is when we've been looking at those, we get our former test back, AP test, ACT, so we really, that's the benchmarking data, if you remember from last year when we did that timing, so that timing is about August when we get that data back so we can look at it. To be able to compare that and add that to our trend data to see what that looks like, so we'll add that, um, we'll, we'll continue that with our August review of that data.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, nine announcements?
Um, Wednesday, we have a roundtable discussion on class rank, um, survey went out to alumni to complete that and also attend, we'll have a survey that goes out to current parents and students after the roundtable and after we have focus groups with seniors, upperclassmen next week, um, to gather some data, um, I think it was said in the communication, like, no decisions that night, we're just starting some initial conversations around that, and so wanted to start with face-to-face conversations at a roundtable, but then also get some survey data for people who are unable to attend, um, that event and just start some conversations, um, and see where to take it from there, so we'll know more after Wednesday night and, um, getting some of the surveys, so I'm getting alumni to take the survey, so that's the goal, it's hard because we don't have, and we've talked about how we can keep their Woodville email potentially, I know most, a lot of universities do that after they graduate because it's harder for us to contact alumni, and I think that there's some really invaluable information we could be gathering for alum, from our alumni once they leave, because that's really where the true test of things come. I mean, we can talk about some of the things that are happening right now, but it's people's perception on how effective some of those things will be, we really need to know, once they get out there, did, did it really prove to be as effective as we thought or they thought it to be, so, trying to say, can we keep their Woodville account or something after they leave here so we can directly contact alumni instead of having to go through their parents like them having to do right now through, in campus, because it's a little bit more challenging, but, most parents are hopefully, you know, passing it along, but for alumni who graduated, for example, in twenty fifteen, some of their parents aren't here, or their emails have changed, or their, some of them give their work emails and no longer at their workplace, and so it's a little bit more challenging to get to the alumni that way, so, just trying to find a more direct way that we can keep in contact with our alumni, so...
How about reunions?
Yeah, social media become, we can gather it from that, yeah, so, our most recent ones will have that, so I think we're trying to look at how we do that, yeah.
Have you checked, have you checked for, like, the Facebook page for Woodville twenty fifteen or something like that, have you looked up, um, Facebook, like, all of them, because some classes do that, they start a...
Sure, they do. They do. Yeah, they do, most of them do when they have their first five-year reunion or something, yeah.
Five-year one, say, ours was just created like, six months ago for a ten-year, so...
Was it well attended?
Wow. Uh, right now, yeah, it looks like there's quite a few people in it. That's right.
Okay.
Good for you.
Alright, any other announcements?
It's concert week at the high school, band concert's seven o'clock tomorrow, the choir concert is seven o'clock Wednesday, and the orchestra concert is seven o'clock on Thursday.
And, uh, uh, the middle school group just did a great job last week doing the auditorium, it's nice, they really have it down with the, you know, the different grade levels going on the same night for band or chorus or choir, it's, it's fantastic to see, so, uh, great job to all the music teachers. Okay, ten meeting debrief.
It's quick.
Yeah, it's quick, here we go. Anything else? Alright, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sing on, motion carries.